Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 2 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. As always, this meeting is conducted virtually by the authorization of Governor Cuomo's Executive Order 202.01 initially, last extended is 202.108. Let me first confirm that each board member is alone. Ms. Weiser?
I'm alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm alone.
Ms. Denapoli? You said yes. Sorry, you're muted still.
Sorry, I'm alone.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
No, we have two members absent tonight, Ms. Woster and Mr. Pickett. Please join me as we pledge allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is a continued workshop for Hyde Park Town Center Park Plaza. The applicants have proposed relocating a playground for the Mid Hudson Regional Education Center, I believe is the name of it. We all, I believe, at the last meeting agreed that this new location is a lot better. We just have some details to work through. Amy is joining us tonight, as well as Ms. Leiboltz by phone. Kelly, are you there?
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me?
We hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we heard back from the Texas County Planning in the meantime that this is a matter of local concern. We've not heard back from the fire department or the police with their responses, but that was a courtesy nonetheless. Kelly, Amy, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, we had presented to you a modification to the playground location for this project. And if you recall, it was originally an approved located on the south side of the Williams Lumber Storage Facility. And we were proposing, due to site constraints, to relocate the playground to the north side of the Williams Lumber Storage Facility. And I think without some, you know, minor comments, the board felt as if it was a better location and wanted to send it over to county planning just to get their input as well because of the modification. In addition, we also spoke to you about some requested, what we had called field changes, but we're going to conduct them as a site plan change to landscaping on the property. It was a correction of the location of a hornbeam tree. It was incorrectly located on the approved site plan, so we're relocating it to the correct planter. And also permission to put river rock along and within the swale that's located east of the McDonald's facility. And I think there was a consensus on the board that we could go ahead and do that with the addition of filter fabric at that location. So if there are any other comments, I'm happy to address those. And I think that's all that we have for tonight.
The remaining comments would be to enclose the refuse, dumpsters, we'll call them, in the back so that there would be less odor and probably some more security in terms of coats getting in there. Also, I believe that we had a couple of board members who suggested you have more substantial bollards around the playground. And otherwise, you have all my notes as well. It's like you read my pages.
Yes.
Anything else you guys want to add?
My only question is on the dumpster location. We did go out there today with the site contractor to see what could be done. It appears that the dumpsters are a bit rogue. They kind of fly off the reservation and they go, you know, wherever the trucks want to put them. Our thought was to, on the southern end, just expand the pads slightly. They're on impervious area, but just expand the pads so they're on concrete and put a wooden fence on the south side of the dumpster area. And then that would provide a barrier between the dumpsters and the playground, but also keep the dumpsters, there's like a southerly boundary. They could only be set so far down, and then that would keep the trucks, you know, forcing them into the location where they need to be contained.
I think that's a good idea, and that solves the problem because I have noticed when I go back to that the dumpsters rotate around freely. You're right, like they walk.
Yeah. Yep. So hopefully that helps.
That's also because I believe that there are a couple of different carriers who go back there. So we'll hear from the board in a minute. Pete, do you have any comments?
No, no comments, Michael.
And Victoria, do you have any comments?
We have started putting together some of the conditions of what approval would look like, and I guess one of the issues was where Ms. Leiboltz now proposing a fence, whether bollards would be needed there. So that was a discussion that the board should have tonight.
You mean bollards around the dumpster?
There was a concern, if I'm remembering correctly, about a truck dropping the garbage and it rolling into the kids' playground area.
I think the concern was maybe a car hitting a dumpster and pushing it over into the playground area, which the bollards that they're proposing on the playground would stop that because you don't really want bollards around a waste receptacle when it's got to be lifted, moved, et cetera, I think.
I think we're talking about, so as long as the bollards around the playground would extend to the dumpster side.
The north side. So the bollards would be on the north side and the west side.
Okay.
Correct. Thank you. Let me start with our vice chair, Ann. Any comments?
No, I like the idea of the fence and the bollard combination and expanding the pad. I think that sounds like that might help to corral them. But yeah, it's always been kind of a difficult thing, but I think that's a great idea. I did just want to ask a question because every time I drive by the site, now I can't not see it. I keep seeing white in between the gray bars on the CVS building. It's so weird. It's, I keep seeing it, and now I'm like, I can't not see it. Like, ugh, anyway.
Is it on the columns or on the sign?
It's on the, it's on the actual building.
Kelly, remember, Kelly, remember you had, we were talking about that, and they said that they had to just move them. They were just, if you're looking up at CVS, it was like the panels were slid.
Yeah, it seems like behind, when you put the hardy on, there's sort of separators and they slide down. Is it little pieces of white that you see and then they're gone?
Yeah, there, it's actually, it's a few feet on a, like, there's two or three of them, so it looks like white bars.
Okay. I think there's separators, like spacers in the back, but I did forward that to the construction manager so that he looked at it. I'll, either Amy or I will drive up there tomorrow, and we'll make sure that we understand what it is and then take care of it. I think that's what it is, if it's the same thing we saw when we were up there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's just so weird because it looks so beautiful and then, and it's not even that big. Now that I see it, that's all I see.
Yeah, it's like a little sliver, a little piece of wood.
It's a sliver. It's a sliver. Thanks, Amy. Otherwise, no more comments.
Thank you. I should add that I did send that, I sent a note after our agenda meeting outlining what we just discussed, but also I put in, I think I called it additional CO issues. And speaking to Tad, that was one of her, that the, those panels were askew slightly, so you saw the white popping out.
Yeah.
Also that they apparently don't have the gutters and leaders from the main building to stream down yet, and that they need to replace the soil, I think it was 24 inches or 18 inches or something like that. They're aware of all that as they go along.
Yes. The roof leaders, originally there was a Yankee gutter in there, and they thought that they were going to keep that, but when they opened up the building, of course, this was all done with Don Westmeyer's office, the Yankee gutter was rotted. And so they eliminated that, and they're in the process. Everything, of course, is a long lead item, so I think that those were on order and should be in. It's either the end of this week or next week, all of the gutter systems. And then Mike Augustine, who's the landscaper, is aware of the soil requirement. It just hasn't been, it's all going to get done at once. So when he comes to the site to do the boxwoods, which he wanted to make sure that I told everyone that he was doing like two sizes larger boxwoods, when he comes to plant those, he'll do the soil at the same time.
Nice. Very nice. Larger plants, always nice. Thank you. Please thank the owners for that investment.
Michael?
It's a good.
Yes.
What also came up at the agenda meeting was trying to follow up on Stephanie Wise's suggestion that they add additional trees than there has been proposed.
Those would be in the landscape islands that are just west of the main building you're talking about in the parking area?
And a little bit closer to the building, if I remember the discussion we had on Thursday.
I was just taking a look at the landscape plan on that. So while I look at that, Diane, do you want to add any other comments?
I like Stephanie's comments about adding, I had not considered them. And I am not a landscape artist, so like the types of trees one would be adding, I would defer to people far more knowledgeable. Otherwise, I think the plans look great. I'm so happy that they changed the playground, and I'm in total agreement about the dumpster area and what added improvements can be done there. And I thank them as always.
I can just comment on the trees that we were talking about, and I do remember the conversation we were trying to do in lieu of. So all the trees have been ordered and are at Mike Augustine's facility, ready to be planted. And, you know, I think that we've done a significant investment, so just asking him to add and order more trees at this point, you know, although you have the purview to do it, we would respectfully ask that we not be required to do that, given all the work that's been done to date. And, you know, again, I didn't know this, but Mike Augustine is doing the larger boxwoods in the front, so I think that that will be a significant improvement as well.
Well, I personally agree. I personally agree, but we'll hear from the rest of the board as well.
Sure.
Ms. Weiser? Ms. Weiser comments?
I think the fence on the southern side of the dumpster is a good idea. And I drove through the parking lot today, and it does, it does seem very green and very forested. I saw that they already notched out the squares for the, for the new landscape. And it, you know, at least like on the route, you know, right before Route 9, it's, it's very forested. I don't know if we really need more up there. So I think that it's looking really good. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
I am also okay with the fence on the southern side of the dumpster area and the bollards around the playground area. And just to add another note about the landscaping, as you guys probably all know with everything, supply chains are really difficult right now. So if the contractor has everything, rather than throwing a loop in there with other material that might not be easily found, it might really kind of make it difficult. And the larger, the larger boxwoods, I think, are a nice addition to the site. Thank you.
Vice Chair, do you want to weigh in on that, on the addition of the trees?
Yeah, I'm fine. I also agree that it's, it looks really nice right now. It's, so, I mean, it's a nice to have, but I don't think I would mandate it.
Thank you. And I'm going to weigh in with them. That's why I think I forgot, because to me, if we didn't get those trees at the first iteration, I don't think it's sort of fair to come back now, considering that this proposal, we're only discussing the landscaping because the applicants first proposed making some changes to it. So I'm comfortable moving forward as is. And I will echo what everybody else said, had to say, Kelly and Amy. I think all those, so do you guys want to submit new plans before the next meeting so we can get rid of some of the conditions? Or do you want to have us just condition this so that you can then submit them later?
We were hoping tonight that we could proceed, if we can, with a resolution and then try to, you know, address the conditions on the plans. The only reason being is I do have everyone scheduled to try to start the end of this week. I think Westchester Medical is looking to get their facility moved July 1, so they're trying to coordinate the end of the school, the school year. So if we can advance it tonight, that would be wonderful. You know, if we can't, I understand.
The resolute, so one thing that we don't have the ability to do is, I said, we have a draft resolution, but it's full of blanks because we don't know what the fence will look like. That's, that's one of the things we're supposed to see, the fence that would be going between the dumpster and the playground.
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, I guess we could say a fence to, I mean, we're not supposed to be, let me turn it over to Victoria.
We had, we, we looked at availability, so I think this kind of goes along with what Chris had said, is that there's limited availability. So the contractor did research to see what he was able to get immediately. And at the moment, he cannot get board on board. He was able to get wood stockade fence, six foot or eight foot. Either one of those were available. He's had board on board for another project on order for four weeks. So I don't know our, you know, chances of being able to get that in right away, but we could put a stockade either six or eight foot there. And he said an eight foot section will fit.
So this is for the screening around the dumpsters?
Dumpster.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen right now. The board. So this is a list of potential draft conditions. There's two that are sort of open-ended. So item three says to include substantial bollards in front of the playground area in the dumpster. I don't know if this is still a concern for the board. There was a question about the number of bollards provided. So this would require them to add a few more, to be approved by Pete Sataro. And then for revision of the amended plan set, to include, include screening of both refuse areas with a six-foot wood stockade fence.
So the bollards, the spacing is a standard requirement, you know, that we provide, and I think that that was, the spacing is on the plans. If, you know, Pete wants to suggest a larger size for the bollards, we're happy to provide a larger size. Again, it's just kind of based on availability that we're going to be able to get. And I do believe that the contractor has tried to order the ones that we have on the plans because we're all trying to get this installed pretty quickly. You know, if you want them closer together, again, this is, it's kind of all long lead time stuff is, we'll do the best that we can. But if Pete wants to suggest a larger size, I'm happy to just, you know, agree to that tonight so we can advance the.
What size are they now?
Amy, are you able to blow up that portion of the plan so that we can see the size of the bollards?
I sure will try. Let me just see here. Where's my soup? Trying to find my desktop. Hold on, I gotta close everything.
So Pete, what is the standard size that you, yep, go ahead.
It just says bollard, install additional bollards five feet? No, that's off-center.
On center. Yep, five feet on center.
Looking to see if I could see the height.
Pete, I think they're eight inches, and I think they're 36.
I mean, if they're eight inches, I mean, if they're, if they're, you know, eight inches, that's, you know, more than enough. I was going to say like six inches is, six inches is plenty.
I think they're, yeah, I think, Amy, I don't know if you're able to say, I think it says like, okay.
I didn't know if he had a detail or something. And they're how high?
I, you know, I think they're, I think they're 48 because that's the height of the fence.
Yeah.
They are, they are 36 inches high. They have, they go down a certain distance as well into concrete, and I don't see a diameter on them. No, it's six inch, six inch diameter.
That's fine. The six inches is fine.
Okay.
Okay, so the board is happy with the number and size of the proposed bollards?
Five feet, they're five foot apart, right?
Five foot on center.
Five foot, five foot on center.
Meaning a car cannot get through.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Car's not going to, car's not going to get through that.
We can remove condition four?
Well, Amy, could I put my screen back up?
Yep, I'll stop.
So I had accidentally deleted, when I took out the extra trees. Condition four is about the river rock and fabric underlay, but three, let's see. So I'm taking out, item three about the bollards.
Yes.
Cynthia just texted me that she thinks that there's another dumpster where the original playground was located. I don't see it on the plans, but is there something new that's going to be in that corner dumpster-wise?
No, you're talking about a dumpster where the current Westchester Medical playground is?
No. The original proposed change, south of the shed.
Oh, there may, they may, they may have put a dumpster in there for construction because they're trying to finish up construction. So there might be something there that they placed just to finish up construction.
It was something on the plan. I haven't, I haven't been to the site. It was a symbol on the plan we were questioning.
Oh, there's no, yeah, there's no dumpster proposed in that corner.
No, there's nothing, I'm looking, there's.
Yeah, we couldn't even get it in there.
I don't think you could. Okay.
No.
Let me just quickly ask the board, is everyone okay with the resolution the way it's written now? And do you want to say that that could be a six foot or eight foot wood stockade because it's not on the property line, so it can be a different height, what we permit in the setbacks? In case you guys think that six feet is not high enough, Kelly, do you want us to amend that condition to say six up to, up to an eight foot wood stockade fence?
It was really up to the purview of the board, and that would be great. Then it gives us flexibility as far as availability.
Can you change that one? Please, Victoria?
Thank you.
And I will introduce this resolution if we're ready. Board members, can you just nod or weigh in quickly? I can sort of see everybody that you're okay with the resolution as written or just unmute. Yes, I see Ann and Diane.
I'm just, I'm firing. Oh, do you need me to keep it up?
You'll need for me to keep up the conditions.
Okay.
So, resolution to grant site plan amendment approval, Hyde Park Town Center Park Plaza playground modification, June 2, 2021. Resolution number to be determined. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the amended site plan set and authorizes the chairperson or his authorized designated sign the amended site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, the amended site plan set shall be appended to the amended site plan set for Phase 2, signed by the chair on January 27, 2021. Three, revision of the amended site plan set to show the revised location of the tree east of Building 1, and to include a note regarding the proposed river rock and fabric underlay. Four, revision of the amended site plan set to include screening of both refuse areas with a wood stockade fence up to eight feet tall.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Kelly and Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone and appreciate you letting me do this via phone. Thank you so much.
No, 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 I hope you enjoy your son's game.
Thank you. We're winning, so fingers crossed.
Oh, way, way to go.
Yes. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Next item on the agenda is what we call 64 Falkil Road, also known as Highbury Estate. This is a two-lot subdivision as well as a site plan for the construction of two single family homes. Mr. Scott, welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Let me turn it over to you. You made some changes?
Yes, we received memos from Bonnie and from Peter, and with Bonnie, basically turned a bunch of layers on and off on our plans to provide details she requested. We've also added a buffer treescape at Station 650, which basically will provide screening to a neighbor to the southeast and as, as you go up the driveway. And we made some minor amendments to the EAF. That was pretty much what we did for that. Peter indicated in his review, some minor items, are trees existing or not? We identified a bunch of items like that. We did talk about the open space that we proposed to be dedicated, and we also put together, well, we had Spencer Hall put together a plat map for preliminary review and a map with easements of all these various components. And the last item that we had to work out with Peter is where do we put monuments on our mapping? Spencer put a couple of locations, basically for the lot line. I think our position on the monuments for the easement is they would be drafted to, to the driveway itself, almost like a blanket sort of easement document with has, meets, and bounds, but we wouldn't monument them because when they build these things, we'll have to do an as-built to make sure we're, we're okay with the, with the locations as a final condition. So, and that was pretty much what we did on the project.
So, Mr. Scott, we're prepared to take action tonight to circulate. One of the questions that we had, is there going to be lighting along the driveway? It's a long driveway, so I assume there'll be something?
No, not really. It'll be dark, only potentially between the two houses. We may have some very low pedestrian lighting, but it would only be turned on with a switch. It wouldn't be photo, photo, photo-activated.
When you say pedestrian, do you mean six-foot like posts that you would see like along a sidewalk or?
Yeah, pretty much. It'd be like probably three feet high, mounted on a wood post, just provide some very low lighting pointing downward. So at nighttime, you don't, you have some sort of safety, especially in the area where the pool house is and the main house, so you can go between the two.
Thank you. Just a reminder that we are subject to dark skylighting guidelines here through Greenway. And of course, because this is high up, people looking at will be able to see the lights. We just want to make sure that they stay low level.
It'd be all night sky compliant.
And start with our consultants, Ms. Franzen?
So at this point, we received the plans Wednesday. We're still going through them. We did discuss to some extent what had been submitted, and we'll get a formal memo to the board. I think at this point, we're just anticipating the board will commence the seeker process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sataro?
Yeah, same thing as Bonnie. We got the plans, and I just got back from vacation, so we'll take a look at them. Ted and I were out making some site visits, you know, today, so we visited the property today. And, you know, we drove up there. It's, you know, interesting, you know, for sure. You know, it's beautiful up there on the top, oh my God. And we got a chance to talk to the owner for a while, so, but we'll look at the plans and then, you know, we'll get something out.
Ms. Moss, comments?
No, I think, I think we're good.
You had mentioned potentially asking the applicant to plant some sort of tree with an exfoliating bark in the conservation areas where there's already been disturbance. So I'm just putting that into the record now, Mr. Scott. It doesn't have to be shag bark hickory, anything that would have a bark that would exfoliate would probably add there. And I believe Ted also talked about a thermal benefit.
Right.
Putting it politely. Since I've been kind of denuded up in that area, but thank you otherwise, Ted. Ms. Paul Doro, any comments?
The plans are ready for circulation at this point, and so the board will do that tonight. We had a lot of discussion about whether there would be any impact to an existing stream and whether that would need a variance, but after Ms. Moss conducted her site visit today, she determined that a variance would not be needed.
Thank you. And let me start with board members. Ms. Denapoli, comments?
Not at this moment.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Weiser?
I don't have any comments.
Vice Chair?
I'll, I'll make it unanimous, no comment.
Okey-dokey. And my only comments were about the lighting. We may need to have a note attached to the approval at some point for the, or a note on the map for the site plan, talking about lighting, which is a good point. Otherwise, I have no additional comments either. I'm looking forward to this proceeding. I believe that this resolution will be introduced by, who's actually doing this? You think?
I am doing it.
Thank you, Chris.
Resolution typing action circulating for lead agency and accepting sketch 64 Falkil Road, two-lot subdivision, resolution number 2021-08. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved.
Resolution typing action circulating for lead agency and accepting sketch 64 Falkil Road, two lot subdivision, resolution number 2021-08, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under secret and determines to conduct a coordinated review. Two, directs its secretary to circulate notice of its intent to serve as lead agency and a coordinated review to all involved and interested agencies. Three, classifies the subdivision as a minor subdivision pursuant to section 96-12B. Two of the subdivision law except, and four accepts the sketch plan in accordance with section 96- C12 of subdivision law.
And I second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Aye.
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 In the interest of the motions, no, the motion carries unanimously. The, just for the note, for the record, the interested and involved agencies are Department of Environmental Conservation, Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, as well as Roosevelt Fire District. And are you close enough that we can set a public hearing for a month off, Mr. Scott, with elevations? Because I think that might be the only thing that people will be interested in.
Yes, we could do that.
So would you guys like to set a public hearing on this for July, let's see, this is June the 2nd, so July? First, July 7th? Making a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Diane Denaply.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, you've been working very assiduously on this, so thank you. It looks as though it's going to come to fruition shortly.
Can I ask a couple of things, though, just for on our side of it? We are still working on notes on the maintenance easement in the driveway. The dedication of open space, I guess we, we'd like to go over something if we could with the, is it possible? Our attorney could speak to the town attorney to resolve some paperwork?
Of course.
The monument locations, if Peter could give me some insight on that, I'd like to add those if I could. We have a NISIC utility easement we have to put on the, you know, mention that. Is there a stormwater easement required for inspection and maintenance for stormwater? That's directed to Peter.
Yeah, we have an agreement. We can send you a sample. Victoria can probably, once she coordinates with your attorney or your applicant's attorney.
Right.
He has that.
Perfect. Does anyone want to go on a site walk, the members? I mean, everyone else is going there intermittently. We can always arrange a site walk if you'd like.
That would be great. I don't have a car that can get up there, so.
We'll drive.
I'll pick you up, Anne. I'll pick you up in my Jeep. So I'll send out an email this weekend.
Four wheel drive vehicle.
I'll send out an email tomorrow and we can maybe set one up for this weekend. Would this weekend work, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll send out some times and dates. How's that?
That's very good.
Thank you. And I'll bring a camera because I keep, I've seen the, I've seen a photograph of the view, but I haven't actually seen the view. I want to copy myself on this one, so.
Pretty stunning. I could say I made it up with the Mazda CX-5. That's the border of getting up that.
Yeah, no, I have a low car, so.
Yeah, so, all right, Mr. Scott, we'll see you in a month. Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Next item of business is Bellfield Waste Flower Treatment Facility, both the lot line alteration and the full expansion of buildout. The applicants could not be here tonight. Mr. Boudreau is actually at his daughter's wedding in Atlanta. He's determined that, he's made the determination that engineering at this site is a lot easier than trying to plan a wedding. So at the last meeting, we haven't had anybody make any public comments. I think all the conditions we installed in here inside the resolution meet the ones that we need to. And I believe this will be introduced by Ms. Weiser, and I unfortunately gave her the longest resolution of the night.
Okay. Resolution to grant conditional final subdivision approval and conditional final development plan approval. Bellfield WWTF amended subdivision and final development plan and site plan, June 2, 2021. Resolution number 2021-05/2021-707A, whereas, whereas, whereas. Turn the page. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms the negative declaration, finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft supplemental environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the subdivision plat and authorizes the chair or is authorized designate to sign the subdivision plat after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval by the attorney to the planning board of a deed from T-Rex owner Hyde Park LLC to TR Sewer Works Corporation for 1.1 acres, 1.1 acres to be consolidated with Lot 3. Three, approval by the attorney to the planning board of a revised sanitary sewer easement number two for the sewer outfall and determination of existing sanitary sewer easement number two. Four, approval by the attorney to the planning board of expanded drainage slash stormwater easement. Five, confirmation that easement access two does not need to be amended to include a larger Lot 3 or approval by the attorney to the planning board of an amended access easement two to revise Lot 3. Six, approval by the town engineer of deed and easement descriptions. Seven, permission to file from the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the amended site plan set and authorizes the chair or is authorized designate to sign the amended site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, filing the approved subdivision plat. Three, proof of recordation of the consolidation deeds and easements. Four, revision of the amended site plan set to include sub phases to permit the WWTF to operate before it is fully constructed. Five, approval of the WWTF by the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a building permit, the applicant should provide the planning board with a PDF of the fully signed subdivision plat and amended site plan set. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing the issuance of compliance completion of the WWTF, the applicant shall obtain approval from the town engineer and zoning administrator of the extent of the removal before, of the underdrain piping. Be it further resolved that approval of this amended site plan for the full buildout of the WWTF does not implicitly approve any future phases of the project or any potential amendments to the concept plan.
Second, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. Congratulations on that one, Anne. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Hudson-Statsburg Storage. These are the additional units that we approved, I believe, two years ago. They have not been, well, let me rephrase that. We approved a year ago, which is submitted late 2019. The applicants have given us reason to extend the deadline to begin and complete construction. They were detailed. Anybody has any questions? Then I believe we just need a resolution to set the public, motion to set the public hearing?
So move Diane Denaply.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consultants, if you want to pop off, you can. There's nothing left that you're involved in now, so thank you. However, briefly, it was good to see you guys. Welcome back, Pete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, Ms. Forrest. The next item on the agenda is Chestnut Mobile. So some of the board members know this. Victoria and I looked at the section of code 108-24.2B2, I believe it is, that allows us to, that gives the board discretion to add inches dimensionally to symbols or letters. And I had thought that we'd only had the ability to do one inch per every 20 feet that's setback. But Victoria pointed out that in the actual section of code that's relevant, there's a comma between, say, design speed of the road, building size, distance to building is setback, et cetera. But then there's a semicolon. She's back. Victoria just couldn't stand it. She had to be here.
You're talking about semicolons.
Well, there's a semicolon that, and so Ted is correct, and Victoria's affirmed it, that the board for special aesthetic merit does have the ability to go up 24 inches without looking at the, without looking at the distance that it's setback from or any of the other reasons. That noted, Victoria also, because she and I worked to rewrite the code to make it a little friendlier. If you recall, the original code had eight inch letter maximums only. We did 10 inches. And then after watching Williams, which is, as we know, where Mid Hudson Regional now will be, it's really Ring Center. When they wanted to have letters that were 14 inches, which made some sense because it's set so far back from Route 9 there and the size of that building, we changed the code to allow that. At the same time, we were looking for examples of signs that we liked. It did have longer sizes or longer dimensions on it. And what Victoria recalled was that there was a kite on Children's Medical Group, if you recall. And the kite itself was about eight inches, but the tail made it really long. And so we looked at that as saying that might be something that's worthy of special aesthetic merit because the tail's way small on it and it would look weird to have a kite with just a two inch tail on it. Is that about the right way to sum it up, Victoria?
Right. The tail wasn't visually intrusive. It was very small on the sign in relation to the letters and the majority of the symbol.
So at any rate, that's just a little background on it. So I apologize to Nancy because I kept thinking, we can't do this, but it's, I've been overruled. And I agree that that's, once Victoria said that.
The power of punctuation.
Well, she was right. We did that deliberately. There was a reason for that, to allow it. Ted's nodding. So in the interim from the last meeting, Nancy sent over, I think Chris got a chance to take a look at them now as well. Nancy sent over versions of what the code would allow us to do in terms of just granting the one, the two inches or what's their standard now, the 10 inches. And she also added some more sizes. The requested size, I believe, is 30 inches wide or 30 inches tall for the logo, i.e. the squirrel and the acorn. But it's wider than that. The width is even wider, I believe. So one of the problems is that we cannot, as a board, there's no authority for us to grant anything above 24 inches. And for that, we must make a finding. That's 24 inches in any dimension, any direction. And for that, we must make a finding of special aesthetic merit. The other issue is that I'm trying, I've been trying to wrap my head around how we would get bigger letters for special aesthetic merit when letters are letters. So we turn it over to you, Ms. Forrest. Any comments?
Well, okay, if everyone has the drawings, we did that. You have the 10 inch letters showing the 10 inch squirrel, which will hard to see that. We really feel that that's totally inappropriate for the building itself. And, well, the setback of 40 feet, although you might be able to see it, you would really have to look closely and it just looks like somebody made a mistake. And I don't think the 12 inch does much more. So we went beyond that, as you asked, and we did the, when you mentioned the 24, the next one being the 17 inch letters, the uppercase letters, which is just the C and the H. Then the Ts come up that high. And then the squirrel at 24. I had sent some other photos of one we've done. This is their branding, the sizes of the squirrel in comparison to the size of the letters. And this is what we've done, I would say, probably 35 of their locations so far. So we were hoping that the last one that was sent with the 17 inch letter and the 24 inch high squirrel, if you have that in front of you. The ones you're looking at there, I'll read them off to you. Those locations I have there, South Road Poughkeepsie is one of them. 2605 South Road Poughkeepsie. Orangeburg is another one. Dobbs Ferry is another one. Those are the ones I could get that were completed, that we had photos of. And as you can see in all of them, the squirrel is a certain size in comparison to the letters. So although I know the original one, you know, with the 20.8 inch letters and a 41 inch squirrel, we felt was much too big. We were hoping that the 17 inch letter and 24 inch squirrel would be okay.
I need to point out again that the 24 inch squirrel is nearly the height. I believe the width is 30 inches?
Yeah, I mean, we can't, you know.
We, under our code, we can't do anything beyond 24 inches in any direction.
So can we do the squirrel at a height that would not have the width any more than 24 inches?
If the board finds that there's special aesthetic merit, yes. Ted, I'm correct on that, right? As long as one direction is no longer than, bigger than 24 inches?
Yes. The maximum dimension, I believe it's in any direction. I'm not looking at diagonals, but I'm doing height and width. Yeah, the maximum would be 24. And for the squirrel, it would be 24 wide. Because that's the longer dimension. I don't know how tall he would be.
So one thing I just want to point out again is that our sign code isn't necessarily meant for branding opportunities. That doesn't mean that we're not business friendly. It just means that there was a sign code put in originally that was altered and we tried to make it in such a way that the board would not, that people wouldn't have to go to the ZBA for variances every time for something as simple as signage. The problem with this for me personally is that if we grant, if we make a finding that there's special aesthetic merit for what is essentially a branded sign that looks the same as every place else, I don't know what's special about it and I worry that we set precedent, but then everybody who wanted bigger letters than what are allowed under our code could just say, just grant to us for aesthetics. So let me hear from the rest of the board on that. Who'd like to go first? Vice Chair?
I knew you were going to call on me.
Sorry.
No, no, that's quite all right. And I, you know, I drive by this site every day and I've been, I've just been like absorbing everything. And it doesn't have anything on the building at this point. I'm glad you found, at first I was like, wow, there's like nothing we can do. The squirrel, if we could make that, you know, max 24, as Ted was saying, that wouldn't make it that much smaller, I don't think. But I don't know what to do about the letters because the CH, they're 17 inches. What's the max that we could give?
Well, under the, if you don't find it special aesthetic merit, then the most we could give would be two inches so they could go from 10 to 12. And I think we all agree that 12 looks small.
Yeah, and that was a nice illustration that Nancy sent over with the various sizes. I'm like, oh, my God, that's really small. So, I mean, but I also know that the way the code is written, that, you know, we can give allowances for the squirrel, but not the letters. So, you know, a letter's a letter and it's hard to give it aesthetic merit. And I do know that, you know, when you brand, it's the whole package. It's, you know, they're not doing just the squirrel. They're not just doing chestnut and it's the whole thing that's the brand. But a letter is a letter to me.
I mean, the other, I should point out that the applicants do have an alternate path. They could go to the ZBA and seek variances for it. They're free to do that. It's just that, like you, I don't know how we get special aesthetic merit on letters. There's nothing unusual about the font styles there either or the colors or anything else. So thank you. Mr. Oliver, comments?
I agree. I don't want to set the precedent that, you know, we can just change the size based on aesthetic merit when it's just letters. You know, I also agree that the 12 inch looks a little bit small. So, you know, we're kind of in a difficult position and maybe suggest they go for the variance and see what happens. That way we're not setting the precedence as the planning board that we can change that.
May I say something?
Thank you. Sure.
When you talk about aesthetics, I don't understand what's the difference in the logo or the letter. As Anne had just mentioned, when you look at the drawing aesthetically, those small letters don't look right on the building. So that kind of is aesthetic looking. You want it to look normal on the building. So I'm a little confused is all on that part. And I want to be able, since Sal isn't here, to answer any questions he may have as well.
I think I'm looking at the intent of the code since I was one of the authors of this section. I know our intent was so that it would be something special that, and again, something that did not distract because of its size. If that makes any sense to you. something that did not distract because of its size, if that makes any sense to you. But I also see what your, your argument is, is that we should look at the entire site in context. You should look at, say, the big wall that's facing north and how 12 inches would look really small on that because there's nothing else on that wall. It's just a blank facade otherwise. So let me hear from the rest of the board first. Ms. Weiser?
So I was able to see these today. I, I think that the balance of the logo and the typeface, I think that's very well balanced with the amount of space you have to cover. When, when the, when the letters were 20, 21 inches and the squirrel was 40, 40, 42, that dominated the space. But now they, you know, you shrunk them down to 17 and 24. I feel that there's enough balance between like what we call white space, which is just the, you know, the empty space. I think it's just a, I think it's a really, I think it's a fine, a fine balance for the amount of space that you've got there. So I'm good with this one aesthetically.
You would, we would still need to have the squirrel reduced down to 24 inches wide and shorter.
Right. Well, that's, isn't that what we got today? 24?
These are 24 inches tall, but it's still 30 inches wide.
Okay. I do think it's balanced nicely, though.
And the other question I had was on some, I've looked at some other buildings, some of their other locations. The squirrel is sometimes to the right and sometimes to the top. So if you have a preference on that, board members, please indicate that as well. I personally would prefer seeing the squirrel and Chestnut Market on one line in the area of the pediment right there. That's me just thinking that I would miss seeing the round sort of bent that's there right now. It gives it at least some aesthetic interest to me. So we have one last board member to hear from. Ms. Tenaply.
Yes. I agree with all of my fellow board members. I also agree that this needs to be decided by the ZBA because 12 inches is too small. Taking everything into consideration, and even if 15 inches seems appropriate, we don't have the ability to do that. I would prefer to see the logo on the same line because I've looked at some of them where they are. I think it has a smarter look. And I agree, Michael, with you that it's good to keep the architectural interest a little that that building has. I'm, I'm sorry that it would mean another board that you have to go before because I can understand time is, is of the essence.
If.
I don't have a problem going with, with another board. I just want to point out that when you see the squirrel by the side, that's usually when I have a parapet or a facade that is, you know, X amount tall and just straight across the building. If you look at those, preference is always to put it centered above the Chestnut Market. And that's done wherever the building allows for that to happen.
Can I just, yeah, I'll pop in, and I was just looking at those. And I agree where there's like a triangular peak, you're, you're kind of mimicking the triangle.
Yes.
Thing.
Yes.
So maybe, maybe a compromise. Yeah, maybe a compromise in the front. You do it that way, and on the side, just put it straight. But I like the size.
Well, that's a good idea.
And that's what I think should go to the ZBA is, is the 24 by 30 and the 17 inches, and, and the ZBA can approve all of that.
So what we need to do as a board, and I can have the resolution written next time, is before, because the ZBA has to grant the minimum variance possible, we need to grant the two inches so they can get up to 12. After that, it's up to the ZBA to take it to the next height. So I have a resolution ready for the next meeting. Okay?
It works for me.
And I think that there's agreement that you can, that you can keep the squirrel above the Chestnut Market on the front.
Okay, so we go to the ZBA, and are they the final word then, or does it come back to you?
They're the final word. Or Tad, let me rephrase that. Tad, if we grant them the, we, in the resolution, I would grant them the additional dimensions. And then I would, we would recommend that you grant the sign permit pending the success of the ZBA for a variance. Think I can word it that way? That way, it doesn't have to come back to us?
I think that's a Victoria thing.
We didn't collect escrow for this. I can just write a regular resolution authorizing it, and they can just come back to us for issuance of a sign permit if necessary, once they get the variance.
So it'll be 12 inches for the letter, 24 max?
All we can do is 12 inches for letters and 12 inches for the logo. After that, the ZBA would.
24 inches, 24 inches for the logo.
Do you want to grant 24-inch width for special aesthetic merit? Yes? For the squirrel?
Because that's the, that's the max that we can do.
Okay. Okay. 24 inches wide.
Is there any way, Michael, though, to say that the 24 by 30 and the 17 inches are, are kind of where we would, if we had the ability to approve that, that we would have? You know?
I can see that.
I think the ZBA will be looking for a recommendation for you anyway.
Good.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that also because I like the way it looks. It's balanced. And let the ZBA decide on it because I, I think it is balanced that way with the 30 inch and the 24.
Now also think about the sign on the side of, on the north face of the building because that's a little further away from the entrance, and you could go up a couple more inches or one more, I forget, one more inch?
It's not labeled what the dimensions are from the primary roadway there. But if it's three inches.
I think one is 20 feet and one is 40 feet, I thought.
Oh, if it's 20 feet, all we can do is grant, you mean 20 feet from the, from Route 9G to the front of the building?
Yeah, I don't remember what it is, Michael. I'll have to pull that out.
Okay, so that, we can only grant one inch then and two inches on the side.
Maybe it's 40 feet and 60 feet. I don't remember. I thought there was a difference, though.
Nancy, do you have those, that calculation by chance?
I do not have it right here. I thought the minimum was 40 foot, though. Which is why we talked last time about having, you know, the two inches at the last meeting because of the 40-foot setback.
Tad, I will look into this offline later, and then I'll, I'll have a resolution ready for the next meeting. How's that?
Okay, so we wait until the next meeting with you for the resolution, and then I.
You can apply to this, you can apply to the ZBA today or tomorrow if you want.
Okay.
By the time they start processing, we should be through with the resolution in two weeks.
Okay.
Also, they meet the third Wednesday of the month, so they won't be meeting until after our next meeting.
They were the third, what?
The fourth.
Fourth, I'm sorry, fourth Wednesday. We're the first and through to the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Fourth Wednesday.
June 23rd is their next meeting.
Thank you, Councilman.
Can I make, Tad, will I be able to get that in on that meeting? Do you have to have certain things X amount of time ahead?
They need it two weeks, they need it two weeks ahead.
Two weeks ahead, okay.
We have three weeks.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too. Thank you very much, everyone.
The next items on the agenda are site plan waivers. We have recommendations for all of them from the zoning administrator. They are in the state scenic area of statewide significance, but not visible from any of the historic sites directly or the river. The first one is for John Stofa. This is actually to, we'll say, rectify a violation for an already-built 24 by 26 accessory storage building. And Ms. Whitman was kind enough to send pictures today for everyone. Anybody have any comments or questions?
No, thank you for clarifying that, though. I'm like, it's already built. It already looks good.
Thank you. Ann, you're going to read this, this resolution?
Yes, I am. Here we are. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board Site Plan Waiver for John Stofa at 3 Hughes Avenue, Statsburg, New York, June 2nd, 2021, Resolution Number 2021-23. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by John Stofa for the existing 24 by 26 accessory storage building on his property located at 3 Hughes Avenue. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department, May 11th, 2021, and per the request to the planning board dated May 18th, 2021.
Second is Diane Tenaply.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is a site plan waiver for Patricia Homan located at 34 Fuller Lane. Reminder, we've actually given her a couple of site plan waivers already. They're still doing some improvements there. Anybody have any questions about this site? Mr. Oliver is introducing this resolution.
Resolution Number 2021-25. Whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building department received by the building, in the building permit received by the building department, February 29th, 2021, and per the request to the planning board dated May 20th, 2021.
Second is Diane Tenaply.
Thank you. All in favor? Please raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the last item on the agenda, I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce this correctly, but it's for Janet Giudice or Giudice. Not sure how to say it. This is also something minor. This is actually visible from the Vanderbilt Carriage House along the way. But you'd have to really strain to see it, and it's just a side deck that already exists. Anyone have any questions?
No.
And.
This one?
You do.
Yes. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Janet Giudice, 110 House Woods Road Site Plan Waiver, June 2nd, 2021, Resolution 2021-26. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Janet Giudice for the replacement of her side deck on a single-family home located at 110 House Wood, 110 House Woods Road. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department on May 2nd, 2021, and per the request to the planning board dated May 22nd, 2021.
Second that?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Ann, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second, Chris Oliver.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Councilman Krepnek and Supervisor Rohr for, as always, providing the time and commitment to televise and record these meetings. And we'll see you all in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.